Well, so what's, what's happening?
I did mention it's celebrating.
Did you form a new file?
It's not cut, I mean.
Mine is cut, mine is cut.
It's not cut.
Why did mine jam the printer? Oh, it wasn't cut, it wasn't cut evenly.
Oh, I see.
Okay. All right. I know, like, cut the freaking thing. Yeah, I needed to. Are we ready on the end? Are we ready? Okay. I call to order the July twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen special public meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone in the audience to please silence your cellphones and electronic devices. Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Wagner, please call and roll. Mrs. Bates? Ms. Bolton? Mrs. Bowers?
Present.
Mr. Davis?
Present.
Mr. Messer? Mr. Morosky?
Here.
President Jones? Here. Thank you. Um, I need a motion to revise the agenda to include, uh, board matters item, review a strategic plan with the notes, and to add inquiries and updates after report of the treasurer.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Ms., Ms., um, Wagner, please call and roll. Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky? President Jones?
Yes.
Does anyone have any kudos?
I have a kudo that's coming up. Um, I would like to give kudos to the principal of Gambler Montessori High School, Mr. Porter, in his collaboration with Westwood Works. They are planning a canvassing of the seniors in Westwood, um, introducing the students to the, to the community, um, and bridging, um, the relationship with the community and the school on August the fourth and August the ninth, I believe. So that's coming up, and I'm probably gonna kudos afterwards, too.
Okay. Thank you. Any other kudos? All right, Ms. Bowers, please present the retirements.
Um, certificated personnel retirements. Cheryl Lynn Brugman, Brok- Brugman, um, civil service personnel retirement. Brenda S. Braumer, Amanda M. Shahein, Jacqueline A. Dietrich, Karen L. Fitcher, Fitcher, Karen Gottfried, Robin R. Mormon, and Amy R. Murray. We congratulate, um, these, um, dedicated staff on their upcoming retirement.
Thank you. Um, I did not get any requests for hearing of the public, so we'll move on to the board matters topic. Um, that discussion is around the review of the strategic plan. We have a copy, uh, each of us received a copy of the almost final strategic plan and a copy of all of the comments that board members made upon their review. And, um, so if you have it in front of you, we're gonna open the floor up for comments or questions. Before we do that, I, I just wanna say, I, I apologize because there was some confusion around it. Um, it was totally my confusion, um, based on something that I had written in my notes. So it wa- it was not an intention to, uh, to get it approved tonight, but to review. So the plan is, we do a review today, um, we hopefully can make recommendations to give to administration to update and make the revisions as needed, and then put it on the agenda for August seventh for, uh, final look and, and approval so that we can get it to print as soon as possible. Okay, so, having said that, open for discussion. Ms. Bolton?
Um, Madam President, I did not submit anything in writing because I knew that I would be here today, so if, uh, you all will, um... How shall I say it? Be patient with me. Um, I do have a number of things I'd like to, to suggest about the strategic plan, if I could.
Before you start, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Was, did the st- the, the three board members, the four members who comprised step meet?
Yes.
Okay, so you made those, you made initial revisions, and then it came back, so we have more. So this is like the second phase.
Right, because what we saw was mostly textual, it wasn't visual.
Gotcha.
Um, in fact, uh, uh, there were, I think the, I think the superintendent even sort of advised us that this was still a work in progress when we saw it.
Thank you. I just wanted to be clear, thanks.
The first I would say is that I, uh, both Chuck and, and Marcia Futel live in East Walnut Hills, instead of Walnut Hills, um... Okay, well, let me tell you, they live in East Walnut Hills. And, and on that, unfortunately, when we listed, and I was the one saying we really needed to list the neighborhoods, without listing Mrs. Bowers and myself, it does look more one-sided, east side versus west side. So, uh, and, and especially also listing, um, both the CFT representative and the other union representative, um, and the principal that's on, was on the step committee, it kinda, it, it does look pretty east side. So you might wanna contemplate, we might wanna contemplate, I should look this way, contemplate for both the, the board members, the three board members, four actually, with a, a former board member on the list, um, just listing their title, which we've done. You might wanna do that for the CFT people and the, um, other folks that are kinda there officially. And it, it might not be a bad idea that union representative, representation is listed in that grouping. If you, and then that, then it looks very balanced.
I'm sorry, uh, I got Marcia Futel, Julie Sellers, and Milbeth, I don't know Milbeth's last name.
Yeah, but I would just say that she's there as officially representing a union.
Oh, so it's put...
To put, I, I mean, that's just a suggestion, so that people know that the union had representation, and if we're gonna list the board titles, we should list the principal and, uh, also the union folks as being there in their kind of official capacity. Then it doesn't look quite so east side, west side in that opening.
Okay.
Just a suggestion.
Yeah, and, and I'm assuming you are, are you taking notes on the revisions as well? Okay, good, okay.
Would it be possible for you to, um, be down here just because of the microphone? And I think we're streaming, aren't we?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Worley.
If you please, the share of my pot.
Just like they tell us, don't spill anything.
I'm a little happier than Robert Mueller, I think. I'm ready.
Okay, Ms. Bolton?
Yes, I have, um, uh, some visual things, and I know that is, we're in the weeds, but I don't think there's very many things more important for us than this. Um, I like the blue, I like the bridge. I, I prefer, um, throughout the, the piece, like we have on one of the first pages, um, that's not numbered, I like that vertical Cincinnati more than I like the diamond or whatever that other thing is. And a point that Mrs., that, that Ms. Worley has mentioned to me before, which I think is really good, is it might not be a bad time to start thinking about calling ourselves Cincinnati Public instead of CPS, um, largely because it, from what the staff has started here, calling out the fact that we are a public school system and that we seem to be making high claim about that mission and responsibility.
Yeah.
I just think that, and the vertical Cincinnati, I think, is really good. I would, again, like us to get rid of the hands thing. I know we don't have a new one yet, but let's just ditch it.
Sure.
Can we just ditch it?
Sure.
Is, is that? I, I kinda like it.
I like the hands, the diversity in the hands.
That one is just me individually, and a few other people I might add, but...
Well, I, yeah, I think, I think that right now, that is our brand.
Right.
And rather than just ditch it without replacing it or even talking about, I think we
We've been missed.
Give it some time. I'm not opposed to changing it. If we've had it a long time, I'm not as opposed to that.
It is.
But I think just maybe we kinda ease it out rather than, okay, Mr. Morosky?
Oh, I was just raising my hand in agreement. I think that the hands logo, I'm fine with it.
Okay. All right. All right.
I got, I, I'll save all my stuff for later, I'll wait till you come in.
Oh, God.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll try to speed through some of this, 'cause I know the visual is, is not substantive, but it's important.
But just, just so I captured it, if, to paraphrase, so if you look at, um, and I may, may or may not have the same page numbers as you, but for example, if you look at our awesome, uh, senior there with his bowtie on, and we've got the, the, the location directional with the cityscape, you were saying you prefer that visual to, if I'm looking at page, um, three with kinda like the blue screen behind it with the locator?
Yeah, I think that's right.
Okay.
And I, uh, rather than the teardrop or whatever thing, I also think as an old person that has to have readers practically to not just, you see the menu, but to see the food, the reality is, the print is way too small throughout this.
Hmm.
Where, and, and part of it is because half the page is being taken up by a visual. Most of the visuals are absolutely adorable, and, but you have to have bigger print and less whatever.
Hmm. Got it.
You know, you really, for folks to be able to read it, 'cause the people are gonna read it in hard copy or online, need to be able to see it. And yes, on, on page six, that diamond thing is over on the left, and the Cincinnati, I think, is just more forceful.
I don't know, I kinda like the size of the pictures, but it's okay.
Well, I would like people to read the, the text. And it doesn't mean the pictures go away, it's just that they are disproportionately large.
Yeah, we wanna make it accessible to folks as well. And just a quick, just a quick moment on, uh, on the spirit behind the, the directional. If you were to open Google Maps or DoorDash or any app, that's the icon that would be, that's your locator.
Are we allowed to use it?
Absolutely are.
Okay, good.
So, 'cause so many people do. So that is the spirit behind that, and the stars being, taking that, as we evolve our brand, as we were just talking about.
Moving to stars.
Stars out. So that's, that's kinda where we were going with that. So that's, um...
Maybe smaller.
Yeah, but I, I, I think we can bump up the, the tax, no problem.
Okay, cool. Um, I think the strongest part of the beginning is the rally cry. And, and I know that I'm the one that always says, you know, we need to tell people where we've been or what we've done, like with the strategic initiatives, but I think that the letter is less important than that rally cry. That rally cry is strong, it's, it's, it, it captures this whole new public piece that our staff came up with as to their mission, that the public schools, the concept of public schools. I will also, and, and poor, uh, Ms. Bowers and, and, uh, President Jones have to hear this, but this, I'm gonna say the history thing, I can't help myself. This strategic plan starts a decade that will be our last decade before reaching year two hundred of Cincinnati Public Schools. The end of this plan will represent our bicentennial as a public, the first public school system in Ohio, the first public school system in the Northwest Ordinance. And I just think that somewhere, there's a couple things people need to, this is the educator in me, they need to know how big our district is, so I would love to be able to see a map that puts in here that says, you know, we've got Gulf Manor and Amberly, because people, eighty percent of the people in this town think that only Cincinnati proper is in the district. They have no clue that we have these other seven or eight or nine entities. And I, I, and I think that, I think the rally cry is stronger than the letter, and I think the couple of paragraphs in the letter, like the thank you and that stuff at the end, and the paragraph right before it, I think you could put those other places to capture the sentiment. Because I think we're saying this is about the future, and then we spend more than a third or more than half of the letter talking about the past. And I usually like that we set context, but in this case, I would just...
You're referencing the cover letter.
Yes.
So, just to, just to clarify, are you thinking kind of a separate section on the history? Or would you like to, that first public school district in Ohio, the first public school district in Northwest Territory, pumping that into the cover letter?
I, I don't care if we put it anywhere. I'm just saying that it, when we start presenting this thing, people do not know the size of this district, they do not know its diversity, they do not know that we have been here longer than anybody else. And I think that that's, I think that's important, and it's, I don't care where we put it or we put it at all. I'm just, I found that out.
I, I think I would be okay with not having the cover letter. I, I happen to like the cover letter. But I think what the point is, is that this rally cry one is pretty strong, but there are also some strong points in the letter that I would like to see somehow incorporated in the document. I, I think we made a really, we added a very strong comment about student achievement, which was lacking throughout the document, and I think we need to put it somewhere. Um, I don't know if it's the rally cry, the rally cry looks good like it is, but maybe somewhere, if, if, if we decide that we're not gonna do a community letter, rally cry might sub- substitute that, so we have to figure out how to get that, that in there. So there are some key points, and, and I didn't know that this was gonna be recommended, so I, I really would like a chance just to
Sure.
Kinda look at it, but that's my comment about that.
I love the pictures of our kids. On page four, which is the Board of Education, I, I do think that the, um, bluing the vision and the mission is good, but I think with this board particularly, I think this board would, would really like to also somehow highlight the equity and excellence in education board policy.
It is.
Well, no, I mean, it's just regular print here. I'm just saying, we highlighted the vision, mission. I think it would make sense to, to emphasize the equity piece as well.
Sure, and visually, we could do that even just with like a blue, uh, box around it. We're not a, filled in, so it distinguishes from the mission, vision. It'd make it pop.
'Cause it really is, it's the cur- it's, it's what results from the vision, mission, and those couple of years before the equity.
I got you.
Yeah. And then on page, uh, three, sorry, I'm, mine are out of order. I think you could, on the second column, not include all those last bullets. I think there's enough reference to the step committee before you get to those bullets so that you can make what you've got as a blue block, which is really a departure for the district, which is academic achievement, personal well-being, and career readiness. I think that could be fully all blue, filling up that space. It's much more, 'cause the, people don't need to know our process as to what we went through.
Right.
But I do think that this is a major, this is the major departure.
I also think that might be a good place to put the academic achievement piece.
I would agree.
From the letter.
From the letter.
Could I also suggest it isn't an executive summary? It's something that doesn't summarize the report. I know we're still using that title, probably from the consultant.
Yeah.
Is it, yeah.
Um, would, do you have a thought about what you're...
What it should be entitled?
What it could be?
Yeah.
Um, that's, we're, it's our first step into the destination district. I mean, our earliest step, I don't know, I, how we, I'm not sure.
You're, you're inspired by Neil Armstrong at the moment.
There you go, there you go. I just think that the blue block needs to be much bigger, and we could get rid of the procedural stuff for step. And I think the president's right that we should be thinking in terms of maybe the issue, 'cause those, that has been something that's been passed around, is that we, and you don't really see a lot of the academic achievement piece till the end, where it's very huge, but this, let's face it, people might only get through the first three pages.
So if I'm, I'm hearing your thoughts and, and Milde and Carolyn's thoughts, and looking at other board members to see if they're repulsed or excited, um, it's, take, the, also taking out that, um, procedural stuff allows us to bump up the font, right? It gives us more space on that page. And then we're talking about, if we go to that, um, cover letter, which is on page, numbered page one, um, paragraph three and paragraph four, is that what you're thinking for the academic? When you refer to the academic measures you'd like to add to the executive summary, is that? That starts with, four years ago CPS created Vision 2020, and then the next paragraph is, are my tomorrow initiative?
Trying to get there. Okay, repeat that, I'm sorry.
So we would, in the exec- what we're, right now, calling the executive summary, we'll delete the, the procedural paragraph, and then you'd mentioned adding in, um, the academic piece from the cover letter, and I, I understood that to be the four years ago, the paragraph that starts with, four years ago CPS created Vision 2020, and then the paragraph that starts, are my tomorrow initiative?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yep.
When you, when you look at the letter, that the next to last letter, uh, paragraph is good somewhere too, which is the roadmap piece.
The result, a roadmap to...
Yeah, it's sort of like, as a result of the strategic plan, exactly.
That was the brand identity statement, that felt like it stuck out like a swarthrum in previous drafts in terms of what we're doing, so I agree, I, I like keeping it somewhere, and I think that could be a good place to put it.
The rest of it, you know.
The rest of it's a letter.
Okay.
Um, I'm almost done, promise.
Yep.
Uh, print bigger, we did that.
So we still didn't decide what to title it, the one page?
The plan.
The road ahead, or whatever, the, the first steps or something. 'Cause it's the destination piece, and it's saying that it's a result of the engagement. I don't know.
You can come up with something creative. I'm sure.
One more cup of coffee, please, though.
Could I ask a question on the layout? Will pages six and seven, will they read like this? So they, you, I mean, when you open it?
So the initial, um, design concept was that, um, it would be a, it would be a landscape booklet, so, like this.
Right.
Like a calendar.
Yes, so, but, but for the ease of printing, so if we were to flip it like this, that table of contents would actually be here.
Okay.
So to answer your question, I think, yes, you should be able, if you were to open it like this...
Like a calendar?
Yes.
It'd be like a calendar?
Yeah.
Okay.
You got it, you got it.
'Cause I think that, I just wanted to make sure there was some, there has to be sequencing to this, and so that we have the culture of excellence, here are cultural tenants, and then we go to our call to action. So it's more like a step thing, here's what we are pursuing, you, you know what I'm saying? So if there's a way to transition those pages, because if you get to seven and eight, or, I don't know which one, I don't know which page call to action is, 'cause it's not numbered.
Right, I think we'd wanna keep the goals and strategies the way they are, but I think there's a way to make sure we get that culture of excellence and cultural tenants, we're looking at that at one point.
Sequencing.
Even if we had to, of course, changing the cover letter piece, if we take that out, that helps, I think. Even if we had to flip the call to action with culture of excellence, you see what I'm saying, so that, and that way you'd have your rally cry, our call to action, and then you'd have a whole...
Piece with the one. Whatever makes sequential sense. It has to be like an action plan.
Yeah.
Great.
Okay, yeah.
And, and then I, um, I just think that the, uh, I don't have any comments on the goals and strategies, except I do think goals and strategy should be bold where you start the, the numbering. But the other one is, I do think in, in growth, there's just two suggestions I'd make, uh, which is, I don't know which page it is, but it's gro- goals and strategies of growth. I don't think we're empowering families to choose us, we are encouraging them to choose us.
Can you help me with...
Yeah, top of, it's with the, see the girl?
Uh, expand the CPS footprint and encouraging families.
Yeah, instead of empowering them. The, the other piece is, there's one, two other pieces on growth, you know, how, that's what I'm thinking about. In five-two, instead of diverse communities, I think it's diverse choice or selections or whatever. I know we have an aversion to the word choice, but it still is a popular opportunity.
It just struck me, going back to Ms. Bolton's, one of her earlier statements, that if we are to use the term to describe the district as Cincinnati Public, we should go back and replace all the CPSs with Cincinnati Public.
I agree. I think, you know, CPS is Chicago Public Schools, CPS is short-term.
It's also a first reference thing, right? So it's like, for example, when I'm giving a, a positive newspaper quote, I will almost always say Cincinnati Public Schools, so if you Google us, you find it, right? That's a search engine optimization thing, as opposed to shorthand, which, if we had Cincinnati Public Schools throughout this whole thing, we might be a ten-page-longer document, I'm not sure, but, but it's also just how we refer. People know it's CPS, right? There's no doubt about it. Um, I would just say on that five-two, what was the other word you said on the choices? 'Cause we say evaluate preschool, elementary, and high school portfolios to create great choices, enabling families to take advantage of diverse...
They're not, it's not diverse communities, diverse options?
Yeah. I just didn't wanna report, repeat the word choices.
Yeah, I'm with you on that, I just didn't think it was not, it's not about communities. And then the other piece is on five-four.
How would you feel about diverse school communities? Because I wonder if that's...
That's, I don't hate that, I think that's good.
I think we're trying to...
That's like magnet and, and neighborhood.
You like the culture of Parker Woods?
Excellent, right.
You could get into Parker Woods.
And it encompasses all.
That's, that's perfect. And then somewhere in the fives, we're emphasizing mortar, building and bricks a little too much, and the word programming has to be there, because I know those of us that, on student achievement especially, we know we have to start reviewing things like, do we really have PIDEA? Do we, and, and it's impacting the enrollment piece and what have you. So somewhere in there where we're talking about expanding, it would be, we have to be also reviewing and expanding programming. And believe it or not, that's my last comment.
Do you have any?
I think.
I think there were good comments.
I, I think, with respect, I'm not sure if I believe her, but I'm willing to...
What'd you say?
I said, with respect, I'm not, I'm not sure I believe her, but I'm willing to, so, I'm kidding. We celebrate the diversity of our communities and will deliver exceptional education experiences and programs in all neighborhoods?
And diverse or varied programming or whatever.
Okay, okay.
Because that's what, that's really what the superintendent's doing. The superintendent really is reviewing programming.
Yeah.
It's not just the new buildings. And I, I still want verification that that's how many buildings we have.
We counted them.
Well, I know you counted them, but, uh, I think there was confusion about the west side campuses.
We will, we will recount them.
Double, triple check, 'cause I would hate to not be able to...
There's three different numbers, there's the number of buildings, there's the number of principals, and then there's the number of schools.
Yes.
Well, which is the bigger number?
The biggest number is school community.
Well, that's what I'd be listing.
But we only have fifty-two buildings.
We don't care about that. We're talking about schools.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, I'm done.
Yes, um, Mr. Morosky did submit... Yes. Mr. Morosky did submit some in writing, but if you want to go ahead and share your thoughts?
I do, I have other comments, too, that maybe aren't as consequential as what I submitted in writing, but since I'm here, I will use this opportunity...
It's helpful to me.
...to pass them along. First of all, I am thoroughly thrilled by the use of the Oxford comma in the strategic plan document.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dear Lord.
Maybe my biggest compliment, or compliment, my biggest achievement in your first year and a half on the board. Okay.
We know somebody didn't have anything to do with the writing, don't we?
I thought you were teasing me when you told me the writing, and I looked, I said, "You're right." And Dan Hoying appreciates it, too. I really, really like the photo.
I had to let go. My therapist and I have been in conversations about it.
I know it was triggering for you, Ms. Worley, I appreciate it.
And also, and, and, I'm kidding, but I'm not, Chris Wolf and I had a conversation, because we do not use the Oxford comma, to, we had to go find someone to help make sure that we'd added it in all the right places, because AP style does not use the Oxford comma, which we've been trained for many, many years to use.
Well, not everybody's perfect.
So, we, we got back uphill.
Okay. Thank you. The photos are fantastic, I just want to call that out. They, I really feel like they represent the diversity of the district. It's difficult to do in a fifteen-some-page document, to do that and do it well, and I think everybody did it really well. So, I just wanted to call that out. As already noted, I'm fine with no hands, but I'm also not going to die on that hill, the hand logo that is. I love the locator logo. It was one of the first things I, actually, it was the first thing I said to Katie when I, when I took it out of the packet. I do think, maybe scrapping the locator on the photos of the kiddos, it might clean it up a little, and just have the bridge at the bottom. But I really like that locator at the front. And I think for the audience, and with all due respect to my colleagues who may not be my same age, I think our audience, the parents that will be sending kids to our schools, that will resonate with them. You know what I mean?
Absolutely.
I think it's a very...
Stand corrected.
A now kind of, this is now. And that's neat. Couple specifics, nothing huge, I don't think. Page eleven, um, page eleven...
That's under goals and strategies.
Yes, strategic measures. Student-centric, student-centered decision-making. From graduation rate, and this is, again, this is small, and it's just how I read it, and I had to stop and read it a couple times for it to make sense. We oftentimes show up the document on, for example, the very next page, measure two C, we do from a number to a number, from thirty-five to forty-four, from twenty-six to thirty-five. That very first one, again, very nitpicky, from five percent rate by five percent to seventy-nine percent. What if we just went, said from seventy-four percent to seventy-nine percent? Because when I saw the five percent, I'm like, whoa, our four-year graduation rate's five percent? And then, I had to stop and look at it a couple times, it's very nitpicky.
I had different page numbers than you, Mike, I'm sorry, can you...
Student-centered decision-making.
Under graduation rate.
Strategic measures, graduation rate.
Oh, you're in strategic measure.
Sorry.
So, increasing the four-year graduation rate by five percent to seventy-nine percent.
Yeah, just say from seventy-four to seventy-five. Again, it's a silly thing, maybe, but when I read it, I was like, I don't think our graduation rate's five, and then I read it a few times, like, oh. So, small, small thing, maybe, but maybe, help it flow. Excuse me. Then, I want to call out publicly, because I was kind of a pain about it, and I really appreciate that strategic measure one C is decreased racial disparities in discipline rates, economic advantages, students with disabilities identification, advanced placement, gifted and enrichment services, athletics, arts, and extracurricular activities. I think it'll be incumbent upon all of us, and perhaps out of student achievement committee, but definitely all of us, to figure out what that actually means and the measures. I understand and appreciate why there aren't specific percentages and numbers below that very much. So, I think it's a huge step, and I just want to say again, that if we're not talking about racial disparities in our schools, we're never going to address it. And I love that it's in here, I love that it's included under measurements, and so, thank you, kudos to everybody, and I'm anxious to see how we end up measuring that. Because it is called out explicitly in AP, which I think is fantastic. There is an explicit racial disparity goal under advanced placement, and I think that'll be a good place to kind of start in benchmark. So, that's just a compliment, good job, everybody. Moving along, on strategic measures number four, optimized capabilities. This is another nitpicky number thing. Measure four C, and I'm certainly not known as a number person, but, and I'm looking for advice, I don't really have a strong opinion on this, and Ms. Worley, I'm looking to you for the most advice, because this is your bailiwick. We use, we, most everything is a number, or a full percentage. In the spirit of consistency, or maybe transparency even, would it make more sense to say increase engagement with central office employee, or employees by the number, as opposed to just seven percent? Because that number, I don't, I don't know what that means, or would, you know what I mean, would it make...
I asked that question, too, because I didn't know what that number meant, right? So, when I was editing this, one of the many times, going through it again and again and again, from what to what?
Yeah.
And why seven percent?
Okay.
Because, right, because I'm, what is, I don't know what seven percent, I know what, seven percent better news coverage means, I don't know what seven percent better employee engagement means. So, maybe we can take that back to the team, and see if there's a different way to frame that number, for one of two reasons. One is, it's hard to understand what seven percent is, like, seven percent of what?
Right.
Or, from what to what?
Mm-hmm.
Or, as you said, a number. So, we're going to engage three hundred more staff better, or something, I don't know.
Sure. Yeah, if we can, again, maybe not the most important thing, but the spirit of consistency and also makes sense, because if it doesn't make sense to me, and I certainly don't know everything, it's probably not going to make sense to, again, to Ms. Bolton's point, if people even make it past the first, you know, the first three pages are the most important in something like this. Okay, so, strategic measures number five, growth. Mr. Hoying will probably be thrilled at this suggestion, too. Experiences in all neighborhoods, semicolon, expanding. In that first paragraph under growth, semicolon after neighborhoods.
Sure.
That's amazing. Semicolons are the greatest.
I'm shaking as I say, yes, but I can do this.
And, and exceptional educational experiences. I don't, again, not a hill I'm willing to die on, I don't particularly...
Someone edited that to education.
Did they?
I don't know who did edit that.
Really?
I know, because I had it as educational, so, we can...
Okay.
But I, I appreciate that you and I are agreeing on a grammar point, for one, so I think that it's worth a, one of the changes.
It's just a huge day, it's our two-year anniversary, so we're celebrating by agreeing on grammar. Contributors, this is also teening that I'm done. The Cincinnati Public Schools' strategic plan is the result of a collaborative.
Got it.
I think it, I think it looks really nice. Ms. Bolton said some things I had not thought of, so I would just kind of like, I was nodding in agreement down here, but just to call out, I agree also with the size of the font, and the size of the pictures. I think that was really insightful, something I would not have thought of, so, I'll just throw that out there, too.
You can tell the people who work teachers.
Generational.
It has nothing to do with generations.
What's that thing, a diamond thing?
They are educators. I, I would have never noticed those things, but anyway.
We do want it to be a very accessible document, absolutely.
Great, thank you. Now, are you, I'm sorry, okay. We, Ms. B...
No, I'm not. So, I did submit in writing, I'm so sorry. The one thing I submitted in writing, and I don't want the plan to change, I just want this to be on the record. And the piece in community engagement, thank you so much, Ms. Jones, I almost forgot. The, the piece about engagement, one of the goals on three B, strategic measure three B, is double the number of affected parent and family organizations from twenty-four to forty-eight. Effective organizations have rosters, meeting minutes, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. That's good, I'm not suggesting that gets taken out, I'm not suggesting it change. I just also feel it is incumbent upon us to respect and note that a mom who works a third-shift job and stays up an extra hour and a half to walk her daughter to Roethenberg is an engaged parent. And just because she doesn't belong to a group that has minutes and rosters, those things are fine, but an engaged parent do not make. So, and I don't, I don't, again, I don't know necessarily, I don't think we need to change this, I just think we need to remember that, and then also seek out opportunities, and it's in here, too, to, to help our parents engage how they can engage, and just to remember, too, that it would be nice if we not only called out the parents that are on LSDMC and ILT and PTO and PTA, but also the parents that are working their butts off...
To provide...
...to do what they can when they can.
I think you would be encouraged, you know, we had a very lengthy conversation in leadership team about that, one that we wanted to have something that was a, something we could measure, because it, to your, to your point, and I actually had a conversation with one of our favorite, all of our principals are favorites, but one of our principals was like, I will never be the mother who brings the cupcakes to class, because I meant my job, right? So, how can I support my kid when I'm never going to be the one in the classroom? And I think that hits home with a lot of us here as well. So, I think, I think in the implementation, you'll see more of that than perhaps is even reflected in the plan. But, thank you, because I think, I think parents deserve to hear that, that, that is, that's all, all we want them to do.
Yeah, and I also think that that ties very closely to Mrs. Bates's comments. So, just thinking about that in terms of, well, it, it's important to state it, how we measure it is different, but, but I do think that her comment was along the same lines of, you know, defining what community engagement is in parents. So, anyway, Ms. Bolton is going to speak on Ms. Bates's behalf regarding her comments.
Her comments were on page nine.
I may have different numbering than you, can you help me?
This is, Ms. Bates's comments, page nine, community engagement.
It's page ten.
Is it under the goals and strategies?
Yes. Yes.
Or the strategic measures? Got it, okay.
And it's page nine, community engagement, include, in quotes, "a commitment to responsiveness to parents, families, and to the community."
It's page ten.
It's page ten on there?
Yes.
On the new one? She's working from the old one.
I'm, I'm with you. And perhaps, we could include that in three-point-three?
Where...
I mean, it's kind of, it's kind of...
Whatever looks best to you, I know that we have these continuing issues.
I, I would, I would like to see them distinct from each other, because I, I think in many ways, they're different.
So, add a three-point-four? Sure. No, no problem.
And then, on what was page twelve, there's some reference here, so, add a measure that increases the capabilities and responsiveness of customer service center.
Yeah.
And, and we've, we've talked about that, in part because we don't have a baseline now, and we know we can't measure sentiment on that. We've even talked about having, you know, one of those little, even the airport, you'll say like, how was your experience today? One of those smiley face type things, and people will hit the button.
Well, I think, I think, to, to interrupt you, I think the board frustration is that we've heard we don't have a baseline for like, seven years now. So, it gets hard to, let's get a baseline.
It's hard to establish a baseline, I guess that's what I'm trying to say.
That in and of itself is a measure.
Yeah.
To establish a baseline, to track, and, you know, when we revisit the measure, we can have something to start with.
I'm sorry, where, where, does that continue to be under the goal for community engagement? Is that correct?
It's, it's under engagement, whatever, community engagement.
I think, I think I'll be getting all your notes, right? So that I'll be able to see everybody's notes?
Yeah, that's in writing, we can see it.
Because that would be super helpful to me.
And then, on the old page eleven, measure one B, do we really want to eliminate these policies that relate to equity? This is confusing to me.
I, I think it's the terminology, I get the, I think what this is saying is that we have a relevant equity policy, and what we want to do is make sure our policies align with that.
Okay.
And so, we're, we want to eliminate the policy, want to review and eliminate policies that don't align.
Align, that's good.
I think the word "don't" is better than "are not."
Oh, right.
You, I think, because you just said it out loud, and I was like, I get you, right there.
Yeah.
That, that do not align. Do, do, do not integrate or align. Got it.
And then, that's the end of Ms. Bates. One thing I would also add back on the Call to Action, that CPS profile, can we come up with a different title?
Mm-hmm.
It's, again, that's something from the consultant, it doesn't rely, it does not follow, it's like, that is the action plan, or we will do these things, or we are these things. The true Call to Action, we commit to the following or something, so that there's sequence to it. Profile, it's too choppy, you know, nobody knows what the profile is. And I will put another plea in for a map in this thing, and possibly a history reference. People just don't know.
So, as, my question then is to Ms. Worley, did, did you get what you needed? Is there any other, or do you have any other questions?
I, I don't have, thank you very much, I don't have any other questions. It would be really helpful to me to get as soon as possible all the written pieces. Just in terms of sequence, we're actually recording the district's strategic plan overview video today, starting at nine forty-five.
Okay.
So, any of these major edits, I'm, I'm like, literally driving over to the producers right now to get them, but I don't think any of those will affect that video production. The, the deadline for printing is tomorrow, in order to have something that's bound, and I think it sounds like we're outside of that. So, we will have something that we give to the community that's the longer plan. I prefer that to not have been done on a photocopy machine, I think if, we're a six-hundred-million-dollar organization, and it's a year's worth of work. So, we'll work over the next two weeks to figure out what we can produce that reflects, reflects you well.
Okay, so, we're not actually, and I'm sorry, Ms., can you, give me one second?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We're not actually approving the plan today, so when you say, "Go to print," I'm not sure what that means.
So, in order to have this document bound, finished, bound, printed, in a, in a, in a way that looks, looks like a collated document?
Right.
We would have to send that to the printer tomorrow. That's our drop dead deadline, in order for them to produce that bound document. So, it sounds like we won't have that, and that's okay. But it'd be my preference to not share your strategic plan with the community in a photocopied folder, staple.
I got you.
You know what I mean, I just don't know that it reflects the professionalism that, that this organization deserves. So, we will have, based on the, the board approving on the seventh, I think that meeting is at four-thirty that day? Is that correct, I think? I just want to make sure.
Well, let me, can I ask this question?
Yeah.
If we had the meeting earlier, does that give enough time to do a print? And we're not talking about, I mean, how many copies are we-
We've talked to the printer, so, I mean, they're going to do as best, bang up job, or we can run a, a small number, or, and we're printing it, we're working both with the downstairs printing team and our outside consultants, see what we can get best. We will have, we will have a shortened version, that is just the executive summary and the strategic measures to pass out to the teachers, because we felt that that was really important, that they get the gist of those. So that, we were planning to send to the printer as soon as humanly possible, without all the other changes and details. Because we didn't want to lose that opportunity to have all 2,900 of our teachers in front of us on the 12th, and not have, not hand them something. So we're giving them an abbreviated document that doesn't, that didn't require all these changes, if that makes sense. But we'll, we will have, I'm not trying to be problematic, I'm, I'm just explaining that it will be a different looking document-
Okay.
-we pass out on the 9th.
So, Mr. Davis, do you mind if, are you following this line of questioning?
No, I was just making my two comments on the draft.
Okay. Can, can Ms. Bolton follow this question, and then I will, okay.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Bolton.
I, I hesitate to, to say that the teachers are only going to get the measures. This is a cultural shift, and I don't think that different people within the family should get different things. It's like telling them, "We really don't want you to know what our thinking is, or what the community was talking about. We just want you to get ready for the tests." I, I think, and, and it would seem to me that electronically-
Oh, absolutely.
This can be posted. The issue is whether or not we have enough copies to give to-
On that day.
How few.
On that day.
So, and I don't think that's that important. If you've got a presentation, and whatever, then, then people say, "Go to this." So, I, I, but I'm really, I, I really don't want us to have worked through all of this, and then give teachers only things that are really about what we're expecting as, as teachers.
Agreed.
It may be the only thing they read, but I don't want us to say that's all that's important about you.
And I think the presentation that we'll have for them too, will also visually and verbally-
Give them the whole thing.
Inspire them. And I also think, we are also providing products for them for their, their home meetings. So there, there, there are meetings at their, at their school communities as, as well. But in order to meet, in order to have anything for them by the 12th, we, we are going to have to move.
And they can also bring their phones.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's just, it is what it is.
Our time, our timeframe is really-
Our, our timeframe's crunched. But we will have, we'll have a good looking-
Okay.
With, with Mr. Davis's couple of evidence-
Right.
That I think he has.
And, and good lead, Mr. Davis.
Help me with the page numbers though, please, sir.
Page seven, under, "We continuously improve," under the great principal Belinda Tubbs Wallace's picture.
I, I'm sorry. Help me out.
Page seven, under Belinda Tubbs Wallace's picture.
Oh, "We continuously improve."
"We continuously improve." That doesn't seem to read right to me. "We continuously improve by supporting our growth in student academic, academic achievement through student-centered decision-making, health and safety, engagement with our students, staff, families, and community, and optimize capabilities." I'm kind of missing that end. Are we optimizing capabilities? I just, it just doesn't seem to read right to me.
I think that's, you, it's sort of reads as a run-on sentence. Yeah.
Well, it's definitely a run-on, but I thought, I thought that was purposeful. But it just still doesn't read right.
I think, I think the, what was the intention there was to say, "We continuously improve by implementing the board's priorities," which are the, which are the goals. But what we did there, we didn't put community engagement. We said, what I think makes the sentence kind of wonky is the engagement with students, staff, families, and community. And then the optimize capabilities, if I'm hearing you right, it's kind of like, where does that fit in? Right? Like, it doesn't-
I understand. Do we just need to change optimized capabilities to optimizing capabilities? I don't know.
I see what you're saying.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
And then to, on page 13, the strategic measures around community engagement. And I didn't get to spend a lot of time with the step committee on this, so this may be a question for Ms. Bolton and for the board. All of the measures are internal to the district. Does the district have any onus to the community? Do we ever measure community resource coordinators going to community council meetings for, for, you know, for say? Is there any onus on the, on the district to be a part of the community? Or is it always about the community being part of the district? And we're failing, we're failing deeply at that. I mean, we're, we're failing, it is our greatest affair. All these buildings inside these neighborhoods, they have nothing to do with the neighborhoods themselves, other than the tragic incidents that happen inside the, the schoolhouse that are because of the relationships that we don't have in the community. These measures are all internal. Are there opportunities for us to create measures that are external to the schoolhouse, creating a, a onus on the district to have some relationship with the community?
I could, perhaps, if you, are we like, like measure 3C? Could that measure 3C be expanded? Because that's a little bit more about assuming responsibility for open and inclusive meetings, as well as the community engagement process. I mean, you could include there where you, where the, the school is going to the community. That might fit there. And I, I think we all agree with you. And this remains an issue for us. There's, again, this is this culture shift. Over time, over decades, we have not been a very open district. And that has been changing, and we needed to change more. So I think your point is well taken there. If we could expand that to where there's-
I was just, I was hearing you and then thinking about how to do that.
Right.
So, something like, and help me out here, because I wanted to really reflect what you guys are saying, is the board will assume responsibility for open inclusive meetings, as well as community engagement process. And then you said something about the importance of the school and the neighborhood. Can you say that again for me, so I scribble that down better this time?
It's, it's, it's an external role, and, and external onus on the district to be involved in the community. We always-
Yeah, it's, it's at the site example, the, the sites need to be involved with the community, as well as the district has to be involved with the community.
I think that's a separate measure than, than 3C. I, I think you're right. We have to, we, we, this needs to be external too. I think that's separate. So it's, it's like, I think we added one, based on Melanie's recommendation, that we might need a 3E that speaks to the external component. Reaching out to the community, or being involved in the community, with community stakeholders and partners, or something. Don't know exactly the word.
And even if it's, and even if it's more baseline-oriented, like you were talking earlier.
Yes. Baseline-oriented.
That would be, that would be-
Based on.
Baseline-oriented.
Oh, baseline-oriented, sorry. I heard baseline, sorry.
We are initiating.
You have to create some kind of measurement.
Which, yeah.
I, I do think if there's a way to merge some things, even though some should stand alone, I, I think that does, well, they have it, measures. They have more than three other places. So that's good. Yeah, standalone.
And I think if it stands alone, it's, you, yes.
What, what I heard from you there, like the spirit of what I heard from you there is like, deepening the connections in a meaningful way.
Yeah.
And establishing a baseline for what that means.
Yes.
Right? Because, because I can say, "Oh, I, I went to one community council meeting this year." Well, I was really deep connections. We don't believe that that's actually a deep connection. It's the monthly connect, or, and then going to the education committee, and they know who you are, and they're calling you up, and what about this? You know? That's what we want to see, is that when we say deep, we don't mean check the box, you went to the meeting.
Right. I think when you hear, when you hear a CLECK report, you hear these things happening. But you don't see it ingrained in, in the strategic plan, nor in, in our other schools that don't have a CLECK resource coordinator.
CLECK.
Two different worlds between CLECK and the rest of the schools.
Could, if we could, could we call out that that also, that has to happen at the site? Because that's the, that's the issue. And now, we know our Chiviet principal shows up at all the council meetings, or whatever. Or if you go out to some places, the Pleasant Ridge people have been at the community. I, I don't know that we have to establish a baseline. I think it should be an expectation. But, because this is a culture shift again, where we're saying that the district will hold accountable the site leadership for external relations with the community.
Yeah.
And, and not to belabor this point, but I think it's really important, worth noting. I've been, I've attended a, a few community council meetings this year, not just in my fair neighborhood of Northside, but other ones that aren't as awesome as Northside. But one of the things that I've, I've noticed, having, whether the, because most kids, the resource coordinators didn't know who I was.
Right.
So I'm just there at the meeting. And I felt like we were maybe giving a, a nice report, but we weren't engaging them. Right? We weren't saying, "Here's what we need from you." And even at one of the ones I went to, the person who was, who was on our LSDMC talked more about what the Catholic schools were doing, and how you could support their spaghetti supper, or whatever it was, than how you could support Carson School.
Yeah.
And that's not a dig. For me, what I heard from that was, "I need to help, me and others need to help equip these guys on what the ask is." Like, what is it we want you, we're here at your meeting, I'm not just here to say how, you know, "Thanks for having me as part of your neighborhood," but what is that, what is that deeper meaning? "We need your help on this, so we're asking you to fill out this survey tonight and get it back to me." Or "Come to our board meeting that's at our school next month." Right? That kind of, and we're going to be, you're going to be part of a tour and a presentation. So, those are off the top of my head, but I couldn't agree with you more. I, I mean, the reports were good, and people were great, but it wasn't, it wasn't meaningful and action-oriented.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Worley.
And, and ultimately transformational, which is what we want.
It also goes to this, this problem that we've had, where we are either committed or not committed to the classic and original concept of community learning center. We, this is a culture shift to get back to that, just like it is to get back to beefing up the LSDMC. This is important. This might be the most important thing about this strategic plan.
Yeah. Great.
Great. That's super helpful, and I'll, I'll work on those. Would you like to see it again before I-
I was, yeah, I was going to go there just to kind of-
Okay, sorry.
Close the conversation. I think what, what would be helpful is if, first of all, if we could get the written comments to Ms. Worley.
Yes, sir.
And I'm, I'm looking at Ms. Bolton, since you are the chair of student team.
Well, no.
Because Ryan.
Ryan is-
Oh, Ryan. Step, step, step. Okay.
Bowers is not subbing.
But, but Ryan doesn't have the material. So we need this to go to her today. So, so who can get, okay.
Please.
Well, I, I'm, I hope you were writing what I was saying.
I wrote everything down that you said. Um, I think Ms. Bates might have had some written comments, if I could get those.
Yeah, we've got those.
That would be great, just so I capture her-
And so, once those get to you and you revise, if you could then send it out-
Mm-hmm.
So people can look at it again. We are not going to have a discussion about it on email. Let's be clear about that.
Thank you.
So, but we do need to come prepared on the 7th-
Thank you, thank you.
-to make any final comments. And I'm stressing, I want to stress, that we cannot pick this apart on the 7th. We have to be ready to approve it. So, let's do that.
And, and, thank you. And, and if you do see like a, I don't know, comma out of place, or a place that's bolded, that's something I can, we can fix right away. We don't need a, um-
Don't need a meeting.
We don't need a meeting.
Just call.
Just, just tell me.
Right. Yes, ma'am.
To that point, in, in these places, again, the number of buildings versus the number of schools.
Mm-hmm.
In the measures-
Put it in writing.
Yeah, in the measures, we talk about our schools, and it's 65. And then when we talk about our buildings, it's 60. I think you just have to do the, we have 65 schools.
Yeah.
Because that's what I'm telling the public, anyway.
I think to be sure that she gets it, put it in writing, so that we get it.
I made, I made that, that note.
Okay.
But it does really help me, because one person changes one word, and then that cha, do you see what I'm saying? So I want to make sure we get it all right.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So, that's the next step to this. So any other questions or comments about the strategic plan?
I think it's a great accomplishment if we can get this done and, and introduced.
Yes. And thank you to all the people who worked on this. It's a, it's a living document now, I think, so.
And just a, a plug, since we are in the live stream, our rollout to the community is Friday, August 9th, at Xavier Centos Center in the ballroom.
Early in the morning.
Early in the morning. Networking begins at 7:30 a.m., and the program will begin at 8 a.m., and we plan to conclude before 9 a.m., so everyone can go on with the, with the rest of their day. We'll also be doing a lot of earned media around it as well. And we're looking forward to rolling this out to our, our teaching professionals on Monday, August 12th, first day they're back, at an event down at UC, with a resource fair that starts at 8 a.m. So they'll be able to get it, you know, we have 300 new teachers this year, and 400 last year. So many aren't aware of the field trip opportunities and things, so we're going to make sure they know about that. We're going to recognize them for their service, and then get them back to their school communities, where I'm sure they're anxious to get their rooms-
Wonderful.
Set up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Worley. Okay. So let's move on. Ms. Bolton, please present the resolution for board consideration and recommendation for approval.
Thank you very much. I submit a resolution to transfer funds to the school-wide pooling fund from the general fund, Title I, Title II-A, for, I mean, Title II-A for fiscal year 1920.
Is there a second?
Without any editorial comment today.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call and roll.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. Okay. So, we do have a revised recommendation from the superintendent. I'm going to ask Mr. Hoing just to present this for us.
On behalf of the superintendent, I just, I present these as revised.
Okay.
Yeah. No further comment unless there's questions.
Okay. Is there a second? Oh, you're presenting it as a motion?
I don't, I can't make a motion enough.
Okay. Sorry, I need a motion. Sorry.
Send it over.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call and roll.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the report of the treasurer?
Send it over.
Is there a second? Okay. The seconded by Mr. Morosky. Any discussion?
I have a set of questions, if I could. On two, two matters particularly, the data coaches that are $125,000 apiece, 1, 2, 3, 4, there's like six or seven of them. What is a data coach doing, and why are they coming from Hamilton County?
So, normally, we would ask Ms. Amott to talk about that. This is generated from the curriculum department. They changed strategically from having instructional coaches that worked with adults, to data coaches that work with children. And it was RFP'd this spring, which was already approved.
Right.
And this is just the allocation of that RFP out to individual schools.
Well, but what we heard was that they're working with children. I mean, are the data coaches working with children? Or are they interpreting data about children to help the grownups?
Um, I, not sure.
I, I just, $125,000 a pop, I don't understand why teachers can't look at their own damn data.
Looks like Ms. Murphy's coming down to help us with that.
Uh-oh.
Welcome.
The Murk-
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
My understanding of the data coaches, it's kind of a new perspective, especially with Performance Matters. So the superintendent has us taking a look at early morning indicators around attendance, around student behaviors, around their test scores, around other academic measures, in order to try to move the kids further along. I think there's a special emphasis on this coming year with grade seven, grade nine, and grade 12, making sure the students graduate on time. So teachers who are in the classroom full-time don't necessarily have all of the time necessary to go through all of these measures and create the plans on their own to help make the kids successful.
So it sounds like they're evaluating data about the kids.
Evaluating data about the students, and then also coming up with the plans for-
For the teachers?
Yes. Or with the teachers.
And I may have misspoke, the conversion from instructional coaches was to the specialists, that we were employees now, meant the math and reading specialists. So I apologize for the-
That's helpful. Just to add too, if this is related to Performance Matters, you know, we held up Performance Matters for about two months or more in the Student Achievement Committee, the gentlemen will recall, because it was a new thing, and it was, it was costly, it was questionable as to who was in favor of it. And now, this is, obviously, this is an outgrowth of Performance Matters, which was part of the cost that was never told to us as we bought that. So I mean, this, this, this is, from, from day forward, and knowing how our budget, where our budget is, properly so, I think we're just gonna be very, very much eagle-eyed on all these costs, because we need to be. So I, I have a question about that, and then, thank you for answering it. A question about, we have six or so, five or six CLCs that are being populated by CPS dollars to the tune of $65,000 for a resource coordinator at Chiviet, Midway, Schroder, Pleasant Hill, and College Hill Fundamental. I did notice that it looked like the contracts were one year?
Two.
Or two?
It's first of two, I read first of two years, in most of them.
I'd have to double-check and look at the document, because typically, they are on a one-year contract. But we may have done that so that we could also make sure they're paid during the summer.
Okay.
Right? Because we are changing lead agencies at many, almost all those schools, if I'm correct. And so, usually, usually, that resource coordinator goes back to their home agency in the summer and works. An organization like ABC Foundation, for example, actually fronts the money for their July pay until we pay, we start, and they start invoicing us. So that may be why we set it up that way.
This is an expenditure that we're gonna have to talk about, RFP, in order to stay in compliance with board policy. So we're, we're gonna work on that this winter.
The, the reason I'm interested in this is that I know, again, for three years, we've been talking in terms of community learning centers, and now in strategic plan, we want to achieve that board policy of a, a full community learning center at every one of our buildings, or schools, I guess, buildings, whichever.
School community.
Yeah, well, there you go. But, but my point is, I wouldn't want to be making all these commitments as we have this, this exit of lead agencies, and all we're doing is backfilling with our money and making CPS employees. We need a strategic, whether it's an RFP, or we need a strategic plan as to how we're gonna achieve this particular one. Because again, what we're currently doing is not being successful if we have lead agencies leaving at the rate that they're leaving, and if we have to keep funding this at this rate.
I, I think that goes to the point that maybe, maybe Ms. Bolton is making, that we need to be more involved with the partners. The, the question is, are they giving us what we need? And, and, you know, or, you know, do they, you know, when budget gets tight for them, they pull out, and then that ultimately hurts us.
Which, which we have experienced with one lead agency last year with cuts from United Way, and they make tough choices.
Right.
My, my sense of reading this, and we can double-check this, I think it'd be really helpful for us to pass this today, because this is people's salary, and I, I want them to get paid, is that that's the first year of the two-year agreement. So we aren't committed to the $65,000 out of the schoolwide pool for next year, but it's a two-year agreement to partner with that agency. So in the case of-
Not that individual?
Not that individual, but with that agency. So in the case of Schroder, where we're, we're partnering with Gaskins Foundation as our lead agency and financial partner, we are agreeing to two-year partnership with them, but that our resource coordinators are actually evaluated and hired on a year-to-year contract.
Gotcha, right, okay.
Which, which we can also discuss as part of the longevity plan, and whether that makes a lot of sense to do it that way, but-
Thank you for the clarification. So there is a motion, and it's been seconded. Ms. Wagner, please call and roll.
Oh, another discussion, more discussion?
Yes.
I had a question about the crossing guards.
Yes.
Is that what we agreed to last time?
Yes, Mr. Hoying is prepared to clarify that.
So that's resubmitted from last month. I understand, I wasn't there, but I understand there was a discussion at the student achievement meeting, and a recommendation made to continue funding crossing guards from the city through the end of the calendar year, so through 12/31. We went back, and essentially, it's a 12-month contract, so cut the financial commitment in half. It was a $760,000 item the last time you saw it, and cut the date from 7/1/2019 to 12/31/2019.
I, yes, Ms. Bolton?
Clarification too on that is that, is my understanding from the administration that what was going to be coming to us, and I guess it was in the last full meeting that we had, was the, a year-long contract with the city. And I still believe that this board has not had a full discussion about crossing guards as to whether they are ours or theirs. And so, when this topic came up at student achievement, it was perhaps a resolution, at least temporarily, so we have people actually at the crossing walks, to say, let's, let's take these six months to figure out how. And I know the superintendent and the treasurer have been looking at the costs and the whatever of doing it, but I, again, this board has not yet voted on whether or not we want those crossing guards ourselves, or whatever. So we need, president will have to arrange some dialogue, and you all have to do stuff. But it was, that was the compromise that came out of student achievement, so that we would have guards, and yet not make a full commitment to the city to continue to pay our people who work for the city.
Yeah, so essentially, it was just an, an agreement to transition a little slower than just cutting it off at the neck, or the foot, or wherever. Okay, yes, at the knees, thank you.
My final question, at the knees is not at the waist, I catch. My final question is about the Community Builders Grant to South Avondale, it's like $400,000?
Yep, who are you posing the question to?
Ms. Wagner.
I'm not familiar with the grant, are you?
It's Item 9, page 22.
Right.
You guys know anything about that?
Okay.
I'm not familiar with it.
Possibly be doing.
I'm happy about it, I just wanna make sure, give it them all kind of thank yous and everything. I mean, if they're giving us $13,000.
We will follow up with a memo to you to clarify the, the length of the grant and the details of it. I just don't have it in front of me.
Yeah.
If they're giving us $13,000, I think that's pretty good, yes.
Just wanted to shake their hands.
I got you, yeah.
Say thank you.
We'll take it. All right. Any other questions? Okay, Ms. Wagner, please call and roll.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. Okay, any inquiries or updates?
I, I have an update, a brief one, regarding Stargill Stadium. The work, obviously, as we all know, is continuing, but this is about the two art pieces that are gonna be going up at Stargill. One is the mural that we talked about last year, and have continued to talk about, which is celebrating the vast wealth of history, athletic history in this district, both when we were a divided district and, and also an integrated district. That's being worked on, and there's been conversations with artworks about that. And then also, and with, nothing's been signed or agreed to, but then there's also artwork or graphics work to capture the history, not of the West End itself, because FC Stadium is doing that. What it is, is the proud history of West End education, education in the West End over a number of years. So that's progressing, and Robin Brandon is, is negotiating that with us, with them.
How about pavers?
Pavers have arrived, and there is some dispute about, somehow people have also now ordered tiles to be mounted to the walls, after they've been told that this is not a cash cow for one foundation. So there's, that dispute will occur, and there have been some visits to the site, and people trying to count who's working where and for what purpose, and what do they look like. So it's, it's continuing to be a, a little bit of a discussion, but the artwork stuff is working, the pavers are in, are kind of against a lot of recommendations, but now the question is, we, we said pavers or tiles, and now apparently they've ordered tiles as well. But we don't, we should not accept that delivery.
Hmm, okay. Any other updates? Yes, Ms. Wagner?
I'm not sure if everybody saw, but the state now has a budget, and so our finances are a little bit more stable than they were two, two weeks ago. And the district will be getting more state revenues based on the simulations, and I'm planning to prepare a presentation for finance committee, and then if the board, a full board if the board would like, on the results of that.
Great, yes.
We have a, an announcement that the Student Achievement Committee meeting is taking place on August 1st, and that committee dates probably for everybody might have to be moved around a bit, because on the third Thursday, there are principal meetings, and those did not get rescheduled. So the chairs and the committee members should be talking about that.
Yeah, there is another, I was actually looking for Mrs. Bates's comment around the need to change a board meeting. Do you all know about that? And, and I don't know, maybe I'm getting it wrong, maybe she's talking committee meeting.
I saw a comment about committee meeting.
You think that's about committee meeting?
Same, it's about policy.
Okay, all right, then I won't worry about it, thank you. You guys worry about that, okay.
My dear Pat, just taking care of that.
Are there any assignments? Yes, Ms. Bolton?
I have one that's time-sensitive for me, by 9 o'clock tomorrow. And just a, a little bit of a fact sheet, 10 facts or whatever, regarding abatement issues. So that we do think it has cost us money over time. I know we have a resolution, I'll be sharing that. I know the president shared that with the same group, which is the Mark Group, that they've asked for some background on the abatement discussions or negotiations. So if there's just, just one sheet, kind of quick and dirty facts, that would be very helpful, so that I'm not speaking out of turn, that would be very helpful. I, I did want to have a, I did want to have a little bit of an understanding, if it's okay with you, as to whether or not any negotiations have been going on.
As, as Mr. Hoying's coming up, I don't, you know, I was just there less than a month ago.
Tell me about it.
So I did explain to them exactly what you're going back to explain to them again. So I don't know, the Murk, it's a-
Metropolitan Area Religious Coalition.
So it would be nice, I mean, if you, whoever does that, if you could send it to all of us, so we all have, so as we're out, especially doing community councils, we're all saying the same thing.
Yeah, Dan and I'll pull it together.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
All right.
Not much of an update, but to, following your passage of the resolution, sort of directing the, with your direction to the administration on the possible renewal and negotiation of, of an agreement, I, I shared that resolution with Paula Boggs-Muthing and Luke Blocher in the Solicitor's Office. Ms. Worley shared it with the council members, aides, as well as the mayor, her counterpart in the mayor's office. We received acknowledgements that they received it, waited a week or two, and then I wrote to Luke and said, you know, is there an interest in the city and, and meeting again? The response that I got was that the city wanted more information about how the district is reimbursed with state foundation payments. And I responded that, that right in the board's resolution, it says that we don't consider that germane to the negotiation. That's the only back and forth we've had with the city to date, so that's the update at this point.
The, I think one of the things we all agreed is that this needs to be top priority in moving forward with it. So I think our next meeting, we need to add this to our board matters discussion, so board members can be thinking about it, so when the request comes out, it will be on the agenda, but we need to be really specific about what is the conversation, what direction we want to go in, and all of that. So if we can think about that as part of the next meeting, that would be great, so we're prepared when we come in here. So we, the timeline piece, I think, is critical as well, just thinking about getting things done so that we can move and act in a timely way. Any questions about that? Okay, all right, thank you. Any other assignments? Having no other business to come before the board, I declare the meeting adjourned. Good meeting.